Let's join in. Lord our God, as we gather together this evening, we are mindful of so many others who are dealing with the fear of colds. People who live in areas that are not prepared for the cold in particular. We are mindful of those in our own area who find themselves working out in this weather. Think of those particularly dealing with livestock and trying to make sure the livestock is cared for and in the best situation possible. Also with city crews going out and doing the work that needs to be done whenever. And others who can get doors, watch over them, we pray and care for them. Help us to be alert and aware to neighbors who might be a particular need given this time. And now, as we ask your presence with city commissioners this evening, as they go about their work. Remindful also of others who serve our state and our nation as public servants. He with each one of them also as they go about their work. Help us remember that we are connected one to the other. And that you would have us care for one another. So we pray that we might do that in our lives as individuals. We pray that you would guide the commissioners and their work. They've been mindful of this all summer. Here as always, we ask, in the name of the one who came not to be served, but to serve.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic from which it stands, with all creation, under God, in the physical, the routine, and justice for all.
There be any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do, we need to add a discussion item. Right after the Heritage Trail signage presentation, we'll add a discussion of communication.
You obtain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hesse, Commissioner Wentz, to approve the agenda as amended. You for the inspection, if you're none on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments three minutes. Chief, anyone online? Alright. So we got a proclamations, recognitions, presentations, items scheduled at a certain time. Introduction of Cloud County Community College President Amber Connection.
Good evening. Good evening for having me here. I have a handout versus like a presentation or anything, so I'll just pass. So again, thank you all. Hopefully you'll get that paper there in front of you. And so I wanted to keep it clear and concise for everybody and just introduce myself to those of you that I do not know. And my name's Amber Connection, I'm president of Cloud County Community College. I have been an interim and then president for the last 10 months almost. And so very excited and proud to represent Cloud. Prior to that, I've been the CFO for the last four years and am currently still the CFO. But we're advertising for that position, so if you know of anyone looking for a great place to work, be part of an awesome team, please send them our way. But again, very proud to represent Cloud, I'm also an alumni of Cloud. So I went to Cloud 20 years ago and played basketball there for brother and brat. So it's kind of coming full circle. And so I know what it's like to go to Cloud, I know what it's like to be an athlete there. I live locally, raise my family here, I have four kids. I married someone who put up in life, so this is a great place to raise my family as well. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to introduce myself. We also have a new vice president for administrative services, her name is Kim Zant, Dr. Kim Zant, she's here joining me tonight. She comes from a community college background as well, but it's sewer. And so she brings an excellent background already knowing the Kansas Community College system. I'm so happy to have her on board and she has done a lot in the last four months, four months, so it feels much longer. In a good way, so very proud to have her on board. We are really putting together a strong team. And so just the things I really wanted to highlight about Cloud. First is just that I plan to be out in the community and in our service area a lot. And so I expect to see me coming to a meeting, if it's annually or twice a year. I'm a member of Rotary as well, which has been really neat. And we do participate in our monthly coffee talks. And so just really integrating ourselves, same with Kim, she's doing the same here. But Dr. Nelson's Health here in the community. And so anyway, we're just really proud to represent Cloud. But the handout in front of you, you'll see why Cloud at the top. And so when I was thinking about what I wanted to talk about to you all, I thought, why those three words below there in bold? Why support Cloud? Why choose Cloud? And then why trust Cloud? So that's how those three columns iron out. And so why support Cloud? For the community, 60 out of Class 150 employees are alumni, which is really neat. Also, almost 75% of our employees are Cloud County citizens. Integrity, Cloud's mill levy has only increased 0.07% in the last 10 years. In fact, this last year, we backed off our mill. So this goes through 2019, it didn't include 2020. Return on investment, so the colleges, college puts out 7.35 million in payroll. And that equates to about two and a half times the mill that we receive. Student spending, Cloud students spend 1.1 million in the community in 2019. And so that's through a T-Bird debit card that we were able to, so there could be more beyond that. Fiscal responsibility, we really pride ourselves on things that we buy, projects that we bid, going with local vendors. And so in 2019, almost 650,000 was spent on local vendors. And then lastly, our service to the community, so our athletic departments and coaches and staff at the college conducted 45 community service projects in 1819. And so we all know 1920 and even now was anything but normal. So we really try to integrate ourselves into the community as well. So I just mentioned these things to really highlight the impact that the college does have on the community. And I know that sometimes it can be looked at negatively, but I think these figures and some and some way, shape, or form all show our commitment to the community. Why choose Cloud? Well, we're student centered. And so when we did our strengths assessment, that was faculty, staff, students, and community a year ago. Our service was highlighted as the biggest strength. And so at Cloud, we have an 11 to 1 faculty ratio. And we're really focused on our students and we want them to know that they matter. And we want them to know that they're valued because they are. And so I came from a high school, my graduate class was about them. And I didn't know all of the people there, even though I did every sport. And so it was really fun for me to come to Cloud because it was small, everything I'd always wanted. So sometimes when you grow up in a small town, you just want to get out of it. But then once you leave, sometimes you realize that it wasn't so bad after all. And so I came to Cloud looking for a sense of belonging, which I think a lot of our students want to be a part of something. And so my instructor Shelley Farhoff, still there. Kevin Pounds taught me marriage and family, he's still there. The next one affordability, our students can attend Cloud for a third of the cost of the university. They're the same courses, speech at Cloud is the same as speech at Case State, you're just paying three times more. And so I think it's important for those looking for higher education that they look at Cloud. Accessibility, so we provide the best value. But on top of that, we ensure that every student has opportunities. And so we are open access, so anyone that applies can get into Cloud. And so I think that's really important because we deal with a lot of first generation students. Students with lower GPAs that may not be able to get into other schools that do very well. And in fact, when our students transfer, they do better than those that start at the four-year institutions. So we have that data through the Kansas border regions. But transferability, we offer 56 courses that are guaranteed transfer among all Kansas universities. Diversity, international students have come from 52 different countries, making up about 7% of our college population. So that's smaller this year with COVID and everything, but our international student population really enriches our college campus, but also our community as well. And the last column, why trust Cloud? So there's been some leadership turnover, there's been some things that have happened at Cloud. But I am here to tell you that our current leadership is strong and we are invested in Cloud. I love Cloud with everything in me, I have a lot of passion about it. If you're around me for very long, you'll see that I have probably too much energy most days. But I'm not going anywhere. And so the Board of Trustees has trusted me to be here at least through another year. And then hopefully for a lot more years after that. No pressure, Jesse. Looking at you. I'm not going anywhere, I'm raising my family here, I love this community. And so I hope and striving to provide the stability that the college is needed. Connections, as I mentioned in the beginning, we're really working to build strong relationships with our local leaders. Amy and I have a great working relationship, I consider her a great friend too. Because I think it's important to have people that have similar roles as you to be able to talk about, I need to bounce this off of you, what do you think about this? Or what idea do you have about this? Or we're dealing with a lot of the same emergencies, whether it's the power or COVID or whatever it might be. I think it's important to have strong relationships with the community leaders. Dave Burness, we have a great relationship with the hospital, we have a memorable understanding for all of our health services. They're also doing our COVID testing for athletes that's required. Very important to have those relationships. Quinn Breeze, I have a great relationship with him as well, obviously the track, we use the middle school, but not right now because of the gas leak. For wrestling, and so there's so many things that we're expected to do as a small community. We are expected to work together. And I can honestly say that the group of leaders that we have want to work together. And so that also goes Gary Casper comes and represents the county commission, and then Kim Reynolds for Cloud Core. And so those connections are vital to the sustainability of not only Cloud County, but the city of Fort Worth. Engagement, we're really working hard to make sure that we're enhancing and expanding our early engagement in all the high schools. It's vital, it's almost an expectation for students to be enrolled in concurrent courses. Just a week ago, Monday, we had a meeting, Kim and I put on a meeting with all superintendents of the 27 high schools that we serve, superintendents and principals. We had 75% attendance that day, even though a lot of them had late starts because of the weather. And a lot of them got recordings of it. And so we're really working to build great relationships with our high schools and maintain the ones that we already have. Partnerships, we have 20 industry partnerships that are recognized by the Kansas border regions. Meridian Wind Farms, one of them, Sunflower Power, the hospital here, Clay Center. So we're really proud of those too. We really want to work with the industry to provide jobs for education for, that leads to jobs in the workforce locally and in the state of Kansas. And lastly, resiliency. And so I just wanted to touch for a second, I know we're all sick of hearing about a pandemic or unprecedented times. I don't ever want to hear unprecedented ever again. But one thing I would like to say is that I feel that the college has done a fantastic job of handling all of the safety protocols that we've had to put in place for them. We do have a mask mandate, we have had the entire time, we've been able to stay face to face where a lot of schools have had to be completely online. Fall, we had 52 total COVID cases positive, that's students, staff, faculty in Con and at Erie. So far this year, we've had, for this semester, I mean, two here, one at Erie. And so I would just say that that's a testament to our, we have two buildings set aside for quarantining. And so I really think that our staff and faculty and students, for that matter, have done a really good job of taking it seriously. And supporting the mask mandates, not just at the college, but in the community as well. So we did make this thing, I shared it at Rotary, but it's white T-birds wear masks and it's humility. It's possible that I'm carrying COVID-19, but I'm not showing symptoms, kindness. I'm healthy, but I don't know who around me is not healthy. I'm just paraphrasing that. And then community, we want our campus to stay open, our community to thrive, and all T-birds to stay healthy. So I know that's probably longer than five minutes, but again, I get really excited about the college. And so I just appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all tonight. If you have questions about any of these things or would like a copy of this, I sent Amy a media, but I have it as well. And I would be happy to share it with you, and I'll get one for you, Jesse.
We appreciate you being here.
Any questions?
Excited to see the leadership that we have here, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, it's an honor. Any other questions? Come see me anytime. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Heritage Trail signage.
Mayor's commissioners, Jesse Pounds and Shelley George from the Prozac Con are going to get a little short presentation.
Good evening, I'm Jesse Pounds, Shelley George here. So Prozac Con is a group that's from 18 to 45, and our goal is to do projects within the community. Last year, if you might remember, we did the speaker project, raised $46,000 to enhance the downtown wireless speakers. That was from a variety of different sources and uses, and I get a lot of texts still from B-Way, it was a great project. And so this year, our goal is each year, we try to do a project. And so COVID, as I said, there was a lot of stuff into the wrench, but we still managed to get a project that we're working on. I'm sorry, the next one we've done now is called Heritage Trail. And so people ask me, what the hell is Heritage Trail? It's that thing around, and you guys will know, it's the one around the hole in the ground south of town. And so no, versus, people like. And so Heritage Trail, we talked to Amy, we're like, well, what can we do to help you guys out? And so she said, well, Jesse, I need you to raise some money. I said, alright, how much do we want to give? And so we raised money, actually just today, we got the final 50%. And we're going to be applying for grants for the rest of it, it's $12,000 total, which does not sound like a lot. But still, it was during a pandemic, it's hard to get people to come out and open their wallets. So we did today, we got the final 50%. And we were all but assured that the match is going to be matched, so it's moving forward. We got from, let's see, we got in-kind donations of $2,592. We've gotten two individual donations, an anonymous donor of $1,500. And another person, myself, at $250. We got two businesses, Cloud County Co-op at 1,500, and Farm Country Ford at 250, which got us to the $6,000. And so our goal is to, Shelley's going to write the grants and she's going to move forward on that one. But we wanted to give you guys a heads up that we don't want to think we're trying to pull anything or doing anything, but wanted to make you guys aware. And so our goal always is just to make the community better, just do something to make something better. So always leave something better than what it was. Did you have anything?
I'm just here to write grants. I really support it, I'm really hoping that with the signage and more development out there, that we can push our statue and descendants and businesses to put their statues out there, so we can beautify the entire area, and especially saying at the hospital, we're already noted.
Be nice to have something to walk around when you're at the new hospital, we can walk around and not just walk around the sidewalk. What kind of questions do you guys have?
Just interject a quick, we talked about this about three years ago, I think you presented some signs that would be wayfinding signage. So no matter where you entered the trail, you would know which way to go, either to get downtown, to get to the college, to get out to have anyone. And there are also some distance markers, the trail's just over a mile long, so we've got distance markers at quarter mile, half mile, three quarters of a mile, and a mile. And our goal with it being called Heritage Trail was to have some QR codes and a little bit of history, especially if the trail had on each sign about the heritage of Fort Worth and to direct people to places like the National Urban Train and things like that.
Fun project, so to get it when it's about, not 20 degrees outside. We can actually dig in the ground. What you guys have?
Well, I'd like to thank you because I know that you've made a positive impact on the community just in so many ways. And I'm really excited about the new signage, that would be great.
Fun, it's always exciting to see stuff move forward. I think we got a lot of things going for us right now, and just need to keep that positive momentum going forward. I work in a lot of communities, in my job, and it's kind of interesting, I always judge us against everybody else. I cover six branches and probably within an hour and a half radius. And so I'm always, are we doing better? We do, how we compare to Linsburg, how we compare to Adlin, how we compare to X? And actually, everyone I've talked to, we've actually stacked up probably if not the best, one of the top ones. So that's organized, a lot of the guys in the other communities, they've lost lots of businesses, several closed, I think we've lost one. So it's always kind of exciting to see that positive momentum continue to move forward. On our network. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Moving on to the discussion agenda, the communications equipment grant.
We've got Kathy Olman from Miltonville EMS and James Fallon, our county emergency manager, here to tell a little bit about a project that came to light just about a week ago or so.
About, well, about a year ago, Kathy was tonight, when I started as emergency manager for Cloud County. Kathy was one of the first calls I'd gotten and talked to us about, talked to me about the emergency communication equipment for Cloud County. And then after all, no COVID came along, and so that took our time. And probably three weeks ago, we got back together, got the team back together. And did some assessments about what we needed, and Kathy is kind of taking the lead on the project, and I'll let her explain the details as well.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. So this kind of started as an ESF8 team. So I did on your handouts list the main members of that team and also additional entities and members who have provided input. But what we found at the meeting is ESF8 is all the different responders in the county. We all have one major issue, and that was our communications. We all have different types of radios, different systems, I mean, it just goes on, list goes on and on. So what we did was come together and say, okay, what are your strengths, weaknesses? What do you want it to do that it doesn't? Where are your areas of concern, things like that? So we did, had our communications specialist out of Mankato, which is Pierce Electronics, who does serve all of our areas and helps us with all of our communications across the county, come together and give us a full county project. What do we have, like listing, what do we have, what needs to happen? This is what we wanted to do. So all in all, we found out that, and I did do some highlights on here, what we expected to do. Unify and enhance our communications within the county. So we've got some areas that have no service, some areas are analog, some are digital, some are on an old simplex monitor repeater type thing that's even older than our radios that we have now. So what we want to do was bring the community and the whole county up and all those entities, including its fire, EMS, police, and emergency manager. And that does include storm spotters, which I did put that on this sheet, to have the same equipment, so we have better communication. We have lots of dead spaces in the county. One is because there's no repeaters, and that's within the project scope to include the repeaters to facilitate those and to cover some of those areas that are not covered, or expand the analog to digital, which gives us a better coverage and gives us cleaner coverage and cleaner communication. One thing that we found as we started looking at it is that the dispatch console, which is ran through the city. The equipment was upgraded in 1999, which is 22 years old. And it's running on Windows XP, which is no longer supported. Right now, if we were to go down, we would have to go to a backup and have Republic County help us, which we already have, we already has an MOU to do that in case of an emergency, but we would have to do that right now because they would not be able to fix it. So within the scope of the project is to replace the dispatch console, all of the equipment that goes with it, hardware, software, antennas, all the repeaters and equipment across the county, which include, right now we have repeaters in Glasgow and Miltonville, there's two repeaters. The county and city use at Bossor Airport and then at the transfer station. And then add two repeaters in Clyde, which will then enhance the dead areas, which we have up in Clyde that are completely, that have them serviced. The total project, which I did break down the costs, so you kind of have an idea of where those are coming from. Total project cost is $211,234.85. We will be, and this is such, it is such a short notice, we are going to try to start, we are working on grants to look at funding, several grants to start working on that. Within the dispatch console piece, that would include five years of hardware, software, and support on that particular system. So it's brand new. And then that system will then mirror what's already been installed and upgraded in Republic, Mitchell, and Jewel. So we would be up to the same standard that a lot of our surrounding counties are working at now. Other than that, and I want to mirror Amber, what she said about the county, for the college, for the county, that this is the first project in 19 plus years that all of the first responder entities in the county have gotten together to do such a project. And I will say, the last year, since James came on especially, bringing us all together has really been helpful and to, you know, to see something like this happen. Because this is going to affect and enhance for every person that's a first responder, but also enhances response time for everybody in the county. So this is truly a county project that it has to have to be done, I mean, there's no way around it. Anybody have any questions?
So how, what's the primary, I mean, I know you're going to write grants, and sorry, I just, we got this tonight, I remember there were wind farm funds that went to something.
Okay, so I actually, and that's kind of what sparked the project to begin with, because we had met a year ago and started on it. And I have new people that are in EMS bus right now, so I need new radios, I need additional radios. Okay, I will have staff that does, I don't have enough equipment. So I put in for a wind farm grant a few weeks ago to get new radios for my area, and I had also a new fireman. Well, then he called me, he was like, what about that project? Like, okay, so I'm pulling my wind farm money or my request out of that pool. And then because it would be the same, I'm still going to get, you know, the bigger picture, race more important, so. And still cover what I need to do as well, so.
Last year, there was some digital radio bought and started the project.
There, yeah.
That's the one I was.
And there were some, yeah, and it's, I mean, we have to have those communications between, and it's not just the handheld radios, they're talking about radios in trucks and cars and ambulances, fire trucks, I mean, the home on yards. So that includes everything.
And are you expecting any cost matching by the local entities, or will it be 100% grant funded?
We're trying to do 100% grant funded. This is the very beginning stages, we've already been to Clyde and Glasgow and Miltonville, talking to all those communities as well, so they're all on board with the whole project. But right, not being budgeted for, everybody's already been through their budget projections for next year. I mean, it's really hard to do that, I've got money setback for things, but because of COVID, it hits at work. You know, we had additional expenses that we weren't prepared for, we all got the COVID money and was able to put it back. But we still are, you know, doing things to that degree, so we're still spending money. So we don't have money setback though, but it is something that has to be done. I mean, it's going to be based on obviously funding. So
Yes, we're doing.
I would like to have the completed project by fall, but, and it's also, you know, when it comes to installation, it's going to be weather related and things like that as well, so. And you're talking about different areas in the county that they're going to have to do, and it's, it'll be. I asked him how long it would take to do just the console, and he said a full two weeks. So I did ask him that, but complete project, I'm hoping by the end of the year.
And there are some major issues with the communication system because, and Kim can address the sheriff issues, but we've heard from Glasgow that they can't get, sometimes they don't hear dispatch and they don't respond to a call because they haven't gotten that communication. So it is a real issue for the whole.
Yeah, and we, as Miltonville, we went up to our handheld radios, we went to digital a few years ago and started purchasing those, our repeater is still analog. So what the digital radio does for us right now is it clears the communication up, it takes all of the trash out when you're talking in between, you don't hear the garbage messages or whatever. So what digital repeater will do would then expand our area, so we're able to go farther. So we actually, part of my service area is in Ottawa County, so it will help that as well. But also Glasgow, they're also analog, and then adding two repeaters in Clyde, one for sheriff, and then one specifically for Clyde Fire and EMS, they don't even have a repeater, so they'll finally have their own channel. So that will be a huge help, where they're transporting to, the only place they go to is Fort Worth, so.
Just by way of comparison, just explain a little bit the danger issues to this, I could just tell a story from a recent encounter. I could just tell a story from a recent encounter the sheriff's department had in Clyde. We have no repeater, although I can tell we had something there, but we did not. We had a armed sus- suspect in his house there named Clyde, threatening to shoot people, shoot cops if they shut up. We could absolutely not talk to each other there in Clyde. And those, you know, we can't coordinate, officers are in danger, and the officers are scared enough. And then now they can't talk to their dispatcher, stuff like that. And I'm sure that would be mirrored on any dangerous thing even by EMS. I mean, to say, we could talk to EMS and I got an officer down, they're not coming up to help because they don't know the, you know, the scene secure stuff, you know, all those things can happen. And I've seen, I've heard them happen or been a part of them happening for 19 years in the county. It's been atrocious for 19 years. So I had taken the standpoint, just to talk about the teamwork, I honestly, I'll be honest, I took the standpoint when I wanted to be sheriff, that I was just going to give away with what we had for the sheriff's department and I was going to go throw a bit, basically, to be honest, and go to 800 program for the radios. And then, you know, because I'm not used to, right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not used to any of the entities wanting to work together. So like she was talking, you know, I'm marrying it, mirroring how unprecedented that, that is, because we haven't had that ever. And I've been in law unfortunately 19 years here.
Well, it really, it's not just that. I mean, if you look at the bigger picture, if we have something traumatic happen in the county, when you're able to call in, like Eric needs help for us to come up or he needs us to go to Glasgow. I mean, there, we're going to have a lot better communication between entities, which we don't have now. Like a lot of the time, we use our cell phone now, just because that's, that's the way to call. And you know how cell phone service works? That's kind of how our radios work now. We have dead spots depending on what service you have and what area in the county and things like that. So we're really trying to enhance that, expand our range and clean up our communications, so.
Right. And you know, like I seen there, not even just the safety of the officers, we had civilians that happened. And that's just more response time, that we don't know how to help to get in there and help those folks.
I can hear and listen when I'm on call. I do listen to the scanner and I hear their deputies talking to dispatch and they have to repeat two or three times because they can't understand. I can hear Claire's bell where I'm at, because it just depends on where they're at, what repeater it's coming off of, but the dispatch can hear them. So it's just, and it's going to eliminate a lot of that confusion and lack of communication for a better term too. So lots of reasons. It just ended up being that way. It ended up being, you know, we started to, you know, let's, everybody has a complaint. Let's see what complaints are and it just kind of blew up. So, but it'll be a good thing overall, so.
Is, is there much in the, most of it looks pretty much equipment wise, is there much infrastructure costs that, putting it up or is it?
That's all infrastructure.
I guess what I'm thinking of is like, will we have to construct towers or do we just affix a repeater to an existing tower?
No. So the only places, so what will be replaced is like the antennas and there's a seven or eight area, I remember at the dispatch center. Those will be replaced, the same location, the places, it's Concordia is on the water tower, Miltonville, we have our own tower. Ours is the same as a sheriff, so it's existing. Clyde, we've already been at Clyde City Council and put in a, a request for them to allow us to put it up on the water tower.
Sure.
So of course, no money associated with it, just the permission to do that. So that's already been taken care of, so.
Yeah, it's getting the materials to do that.
Correct, yeah. And a lot of it's labor materials. And I did try to break it out a little bit, but you know, the console, the repeaters, you know, that's, it's about the same either way. Judge, about 20,300. And then radios and programming, that's for each individual entity. So we're, we've all parked and that could fluctuate a little bit on how many. That's 117 handheld radios and I believe 30 mounted radios. It's what that contributes to programming, installation and all that stuff, so. Right, so like Clyde, they have no radios. So we had to, you know, you have to furnish them completely, the fire and EMS, so they have nothing. So like they're starting from scratch. So if we get some first, we'll, you know, maybe those out that way. So make sure they get online first, but.
Communication and teamwork are pretty important things regardless of the situation going here. Especially in this field, it's, you don't have that, you're really missing out.
So basically today was to come and make everybody aware of it. Long term, like I, I mentioned with the dispatch console, when that gets replaced is the software, hardware piece of that after the five years would be budgeted in under this. But so to keep that up, yeah, to keep that software upgraded, so.
Keep it water. It'd be well worth it because right now us and the sheriff's office can't hear each other unless we scan. That was of course, using some difficult, it's horrible for the law enforcement.
Well, and I think.
We scan out in County, because usually if you scan on your radio, you can hear each other. But if we scan out in County, we can't hear each other out there where we're the ones out there together doing that part of the job. So we scan, you know, we, we don't hear each other and only part of the time do we hear these guys.
Like you gave a telephone. Hard to maintain the integrity of the message if it's.
And all of that's how it was set up originally, because the city went and got their, what they needed, the county got what they needed. We got what we needed, but there was never any integration with any, anyone. So that's, that's a big, really big piece of it, so.
City wired it to digital about three years ago. We didn't change towers, we just changed repeaters and radios. Not being able to talk in my forge option, my medic units can talk south, the rest stops south of Slinea, we can talk back to dispatch.
Great.
So by doing this, we'll change and increase that coverage.
Excellent.
And then upgrading the Glasgow tower for you, that'll help your coverage in Glasgow, so.
Definitely worthwhile. There's no doubt about that.
I think with the level of collaboration, it's a really nice project for D and G too. If you guys can decide who's going to carry it to them.
We are.
Because I mean, especially if you got presented as a match, I think they'd really like this one.
Yeah. We're working on that right now, so. Or, Jesus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the action agenda, minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number three.
Move to approve appropriate ordinance number three.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, the second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to police department vehicle.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, you can see in the memo, I've been in touch with the highway patrol and reserved for purchase, a 2018 Ford Explorer. We have three Explorers that we've purchased from them in the past and have had really good luck with them. We've got some bigger officers, so they can get in and out of these vehicles pretty well. They're all wheel drive, which here in town, you know, we need to all wheel drive with the icy and snowy streets, way things can get and all the hills and stuff. Another thing the officers have pointed out to me is, you know, when they're going to hauls fairly hot, these taller vehicles can pick the dips and stuff. We have a few of those in town. They're not supposed to be ramping the dips, but you know, once you're in a hurry, sometimes you'll hit those dips unexpectedly. So the cars would, would catch them and, you know, make possibly damage the bottom side of them, so. They're asking $28,850 for this vehicle, which is a pretty good deal if you go car shopping. That's 49,291 miles and these are highway miles. The miles we put on the vehicles are in-town miles, so there's a big difference. And we have a vehicle with 49,000 miles on it, it's going to be about ready for the junk building, so. When you ride in these vehicles, they still have the new car smell. Because they say generally a vehicle gets broken in about 40,000 miles with, you know, normal use. Like I said, these are generally on the highway. So has a six cylinder engine in it, all wheel drive. So 3.5 EcoBoost also on the engine. So these come with the lights already installed in it. So all we have to do is put our radio equipment in live arm and then we'll put a cage and then we've started getting due to COVID, these seat covers is what they are. We've got them for three Explorers so far, but they're easier to clean. You know, your resties can't stash their drugs in the seat cushions because there's no seat cushion there. It's all a solid piece, so. Like I said, it's easy to clean, plus the seatbelts, you don't have to reach across them. You can just grab the seatbelt, it goes from in to out, so it's over here, so you're not reaching across people and getting complaints out of that, so. Any questions?
How many, how many police cars, police vehicles are in the fleet total?
Well, you have probably 10 together.
That's make four to that Explorer model.
Yeah, this would be the fourth one.
We've had a good history getting up the highway, control in the paths.
Yeah, they worked out really well. No real issues at all.
The price was 28,850.
Yeah, 28,850.
We know how that appears to blue book or no?
I'd have to, but it's going to be, with that modest stuff, it's effective with the, the very price.
Something's for it, yeah.
If you look how they rate it, it's really blue book.
I think the, knowing too, that you have the blue book value just solely as a, as an Explorer, and knowing that it has the additional police package, the added benefit of that.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that. I did leave that out. These are police packages.
Okay.
And when one vehicle goes in, another one goes out. So this will be replacing a 2007 Impala that's not over 95,000 mile long.
How much is that, Rick?
28,850.
Your memo says 25,000.
Okay.
But the copy has 28,000.
I've got the invoice.
Okay.
28,850 on the invoice.
Okay.
I just didn't change that at the bottom.
Yeah.
So the recommended action, it should be 28,850.
I move to approve the purchase of the 2018 Ford Explorer from Kansas Highway Patrol for 28,850. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hash to approve the purchase of the 2018 Ford Explorer from Kansas Highway Patrol for 28,850. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, resolution 2021, 2118, classified employee wage increase.
Commissioner, we've talked about this quite a bit over the last several weeks. Our recommendation kind of remains the same. And so we're recommending that we remove range seven on the pay scales that no longer accurately reflects the skill level that we're asking our employees to do. And then we're recommending change, adjusting the pay scale to allow for various increases each year during the first 10 years of an employee's pay. So that would be, I think it ends up being like C through K, so A and B are six month intervals. Basically a probationary period in C through K and then two here intervals after that. So it was two and three and now it's one and two. People will top out faster, but they will, will top out faster, but should do that incentive for people to stay. That's kind of our goal there. Options B and C together are in one resolution. And then in another resolution separately, we're recommending increasing wages by a dollar an hour for both the non-fire and the fire pay scale. So we wouldn't use a conversion fund, that would be a straight dollar for both of them. Funding would be through the additional tax revenue that's coming in. The expression of tick district allows that incremental funding to not replace into a specific restricted bucket that we put into a general fund unrestricted. So this would use a portion of that, about half of that for employee wage increases and the other half would go into general fund, which would be earmarked for things such as shoring of our equipment replacement fund and CIP fund. So that other half would still go to benefit the community at large. By using those funds to support this wage increase, there's no additional burden on the taxpayers by doing this.
So this resolution, the first one that we're talking about is really just aligning the steps and the timeline is not specifically addressing the wage.
That's what you said again, I'm sorry.
The first resolution is really moving things in line. It reflects the, the dollars. So what, what is the purpose of the second resolution?
We want to.
Fire and non-fire?
Yeah, we want to separate those out. So the first resolution, 2118, is going to increase both pay scales by a dollar. And then we know the commission had some hesitation also at considering adjusting that, the steps, the amount of length of time between step movement. So we separated that out into a separate resolution equation, so that you can consider both of those separately. So the second resolution, 2119, would remove range seven and would adjust those steps, so narrowing that timeframe between each period increase. You can consider them separately.
This brings the majority of the steps or pay grades in line with other shiddies and step up itself.
Yeah, so if we look at a lot of our entry level positions, it will bring them up to average. Most departments up to average are very, very close to it. We looked, we had a few that were slightly below still and we had fire and EMS that was, that was still quite a bit below. We know that we can't afford to bring them completely up to average. And so we, we've talked with some of the staff and, and they agree that the dollar an hour would go a long ways toward closing that gap and it would be within what we could afford and be reasonable for us at this point in time.
I appreciate the effort that you made on that, but I would really, you know, I, I think that this is what we need to do. But I also think that we need to continue with that fire and EMS pay scale, because we are still not up at average with that. And this, these are specialized, this requires specialized training. You have to be a pretty ambitious person to even attempt that. And it's a lot of responsibility and I can't think of very many jobs that require as much quick thinking and, and ability to make snap decisions. So I would like to continue to move them up to the average at the very least. I, I know that we can't do that right now. I'm okay with that, but I think that's where we need to concentrate our efforts in the future. Into the budgeting, yeah, let's, let's relook at that. So.
Are they the only department that's not at the average?
Yeah, we have, yeah, I think our dispatch unit would be the only ones that were still a little bit under. They were under by about, after the change. It, it was less than 20 cents. No, they were still under. So it was still, still fairly reasonable. We had to, to get firing EMS up to average, it would be a change of a dollar 76, so it was quite a bit.
I think, thinking in a, in a broad picture, I think it's going to be really difficult for us to play whack-a-mole with different wages in different communities. I think that the, the goal that I would have for us as a city is to get as close as we, we financially can to recognize that the value of all of our employees, but also hopefully have that acknowledgement that we're fostering an environment that might be able to help make up for what we might not be able to match in a different community. Not, not the closest good enough, but that, that's, that's part of the limitations that we're working within too, so. I think if we, we keep trying to hit that. I think if we, we keep trying to hit that mark, I think we're going to be having, not that the conversation is not worth having, but I don't know where we're going to really arrive at a place that gives us all that, but I think we can move closer towards recognizing that in a sustainable way.
Right, but I think it is an ongoing effort that will be required. I move to approve, uh, resolution, resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighteen.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Belden to approve resolution twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty one eighteen. Is there any further discussion? Stacy to you.
No, I was just, I was just going to say that, um, one thing, and I agree with what you're saying. One thing you might recognize is when I hire somebody, they'll be on eight. And when Eric hires somebody, they're on twelve. So there is, he's not going to hire people down in there. So that's one way that it is higher, but I agree with what you're saying.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty one, twenty one nineteen, amended classified fire and non-fire employee pay scales.
I move to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty one nineteen.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve resolution twenty twenty one, twenty one nineteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. You know, our staff would really appreciate that. We hope they take that to me to tell you all thank you.
I know, um, yeah, express some comments, but I think one of the things I guess I would really like to communicate to Steph is that only reservation and not doing more is, is trying to be fiscally minded within our budget. It's, it's certainly not a reflection of not deserving more. Been pretty chilly, so I'm cold the last few days. And so it's, it's not that you all don't deserve more, but, but trying to do what we can within the budget. So it's, it's not at all a reflection of a lack of anything but respect.
There is a line in both of those about when they will start. Is that just?
Yeah, do you, um, we're the tip line, the funding starts coming in this year. So we're prepared budgetarily to begin that this year. Um, so like, I guess it would help to have the commissioners tell us when you want us to start that. And Stacy, I don't know if you want to help that guidance with the way that payrolls fall. So we could put the start of a payroll and perhaps that would make it easier. Since we didn't start on January one. Do you have a suggestion? Or Commissioners, you could say, um, effective, the first payroll, start of the next payroll, first payroll in March, something of that nature.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, payroll next week and then two weeks after that. I don't know when fire begins next.
Next week.
Next week.
So maybe you have it, have it begin at the start of the next payroll for all staff.
I think that that's probably as soon as it is feasible.
Do we need a motion to that though?
That would be helpful for the record, I think, for us.
Okay, so we need the next payroll. Is that sufficient? Is that sufficient language?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the beginning of next payroll.
I move to authorize the, uh, changes in, in payroll, uh, beginning with the next payroll.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to engage the wage changes at the next available payroll. Any further discussion?
Well, we need the same thing for the, the other resolution.
Yeah, for, for both resolutions. So should we just amend it that both would?
Or now there's a blank.
Well then, so my, Stacy probably answers better, but if we're making this motion to engage the changes wage structure, wouldn't that incorporate both resolutions?
You could say maybe effective date of both resolutions to begin with the next payroll.
Just a separate thing. Yep, these changes that are getting combined into this cumulative change, we're going to engage that change.
Cumulative change for these. It's like this.
Reverted.
It's all geometry.
That's why I'm associated. So do we have a, a reasonable motion on the table?
Yes.
We're all in agreement, this is what we're trying to do. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Does that sound good? Moving on to the connecting link improvement program application.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm asking to apply for a K dot city connected complete improvement program. And I'm going to pick out the surface preservation part of it. What that is, is Villanova Lake. What I'm targeting area is K nine on East Six from East City Limits back to just west of, uh, Cloud Street. Uh, the project is split ninety ten. K dot pays ninety percent up to three hundred thousand. We're in over three hundred thousand city plays, which is repaired on ten percent. And, uh, we also plan for the design of that. I know prior to this, I was trying to do a little bit worrying to Matthew because it was pretty bad in there. But it's going to end up costing about four hundred thousand because that's how much it's going to cost. So I'm splitting it up into two projects, probably back next year that probably could happen. Is there any questions on this?
Just recommend a, through applying for the CCLIP Villanova Lake K nine highway from Cloud Street to East City Limits.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch. Hatch, sorry, to approve applying for the CCLIP Villanova Lake K nine highway from Cloud Street to East City Limits. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on, uh, to the federal fund exchange program.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a federal money coming to K dot, which they get it. They feel it out to us and they give us ninety percent of it. They use ten percent for management. And the amount we're getting back after their ten percent is sixty six thousand one hundred and fifteen oh six. I listed a whole bunch of stuff on there. You cannot, used to be able to bank these funds. We cannot bank them no more. So we used to bank them and that's how we did Eighteenth Street up there. Banked them, we had about half of them getting in there. Worked with the whole street. They won't let you bank them, don't work with us. We say it's too much work, we track that.
They can just give it all to us and we can keep track of ourselves. Save them the trouble.
Just tell feds to give it to us now. Step one through there.
So nice of them to give us some money back.
Is there any questions on that? Staff recommends the city commission approves the mayor to sign the request to exchange federal funds in the amount of seventy three thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars and eighteen cents to apply for reimbursement of sixty six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and six cents using First Street and Lincoln, USA, and then Shore Road. Get that last year.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the requests to exchange federal funds in the amount of seventy three thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars and eighteen cents and to apply for reimbursement in sixty six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and six cents using the First Street and Lincoln Shore Road project.
So new by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize me to sign the request for exchange federal funds. Amounts, project. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Appreciate it. Managers report.
This evening, I just want to take a moment to thank all of our city staff and everybody who's been out there working in the extreme cold the last few days. Especially once the, the water department that's been, um, up to their ankles, chest, whatever, in, in water. Think we've got about seven or eight holes out there that are open, that are waiting for the weather to flood enough to bring concrete in. Uh, those are due to, um, main breaks or service lines or something of that nature. Jeremy can say, say it a whole lot better than I can. And then the efforts that they've made to help customers figure out what's frozen, either their water meter or the lines into their house. And I think Jeremy showed me that normally this year they might have about three frozen meters. And this year we're up over twenty five. So that's kind of a testament to how, how cold it got and how deep it got. So they've done a tremendous job. Um, also those in streets department is trying to keep things, um, clear around the intersections and, um, helping us out with stop signs this year. Getting prepared. We, the cold weather also caused issues with, um, electrical supply across the Midwest as well as natural gas supply. And so also just wanted to thank, um, I'm going to say that our local emergency preparedness committee, all those entities that are involved and how well everybody works together and communicates. And even our local private utility agencies, we have contacts with them and everybody being able to keep everybody informed. Um, sometimes we have, we have pickups, but for the most part it works out really well. So just for you in public, I guess, some of the things that we have to consider include if the power goes out in different sections of town. One of the things that goes out is traffic lights. And so we were trying to be prepared and have stop signs set out at some of the major intersections on eighty one so that we can easily deploy those and set those up if the power goes out. The reason we chose to do that is because our local electric utility providers, both the co-ops in the county and Freeland serving the city, did not receive any notice of what areas of town were going to be without power for how long or when. And so they couldn't help us plan for that either. So we just had to be prepared. So appreciate everybody, um, working together on that. Um, also a little update on the natural gas supply. We, um, we have a couple of different situations here in town. So Kansas Gas Service Services, our whole, um, area here within the city limits, except for the north development. And that, that is, um, managed operated by, uh, Kansas Municipal Gas Association. So Kansas Gas Services were overseen by the Kansas Corporation Commission. So they have some protections for price gouging and they also have, um, some criteria that they can't shut off customers if they drop below a certain temperature threshold, which is really good. So our residents are very well protected. So we're very thankful for that. The Kansas Municipal Gas Association doesn't enjoy those same protections. And so as they were out searching for supplies of gas, they were experiencing the major price gouging of some suppliers. So early last week, the NYMEX index showed us about three dollars per MMBTU. This morning, I believe we're trading it at six hundred and twenty two dollars. So we've seen increases of over two hundred percent. Those costs, um, are going to get passed to us. So for this north development pipeline, KMGA builds the city and then we build our customers. Right now, the two customers on that line are the county jail and state K dot facility. And, and so that's, we, we want to protect them as much as possible. So we are doing our best here. You can probably feel we've got a little bit cooler temperature in here tonight. So we're doing our best to lower our thermostat like Kansas Gas and KMGA has asked us to do. Um, the action plan that they've asked us to do is to conserve, conserve, conserve. Both entities have assured us that they have secured sufficient supply, that we will not be shut off. Um, sufficient supply for KMGA has been secured through the end of the, end of the month for a phone call we had to send this afternoon. So we're very pleased, pleased to hear that. Um, but that's going to help out a lot. Um, again, they're asking us just to continue to conserve until further notice. Um, we're participating in daily calls with the, uh, Kansas Municipal Gas Association. James Bulon's speaking up with the Kansas Division of Emergency Management. We're trying to meld the information that we get there along with information that we're getting from the league, from our local rest of Kansas gas. Um, just to make sure we've got the best information. But right now, we just need everybody to practice conservation measures for both electricity and gas for the foreseeable future for sure, um, up through the weekend. Just because it warms up here, which we're going to be very thankful to hit forties by the end of this week, doesn't necessarily mean that the, where the natural gas supply wellheads are located or where electricity is being produced is also that less frozen or is that warm field to increase supply to meet demand. One of the interesting things too, um, Kansas Municipal Gas Association is having issues with cash flow with those higher costs. And so they, um, are sending us a bill, our bill this time, we should be getting it either today or tomorrow via email. And it is due on Monday. So we are going to have to have a quick turnaround. Um, and that is because they have to pay their suppliers upfront to be able to get that gas delivered. And with the increased cost, and we think they keep their reserve pool with that increased cost, they've had to push out a lot of cash. They were telling us on a call that they had to put up about a million dollars collateral just to be able to bid on gas. So that's how, how crazy the markets are. They, they and some of their other, um, groups that they work with, lobby organizations have been working at the state and federal level with, um, with the legislators to try to push for, um, answers on what they believe is price gouging, um, and to try to get those things down. Also working with the governor's office and they had to call with the president to try to get a disaster declaration step, um, process going and to try and get some funding relief so that these huge costs don't have to be passed on to, to customers. So they are working hard on our behalf there. And if they need us to engage with those legislatures, well, they'll call us and let us know. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Staff reports. Mayor and Commissioner comments.
I too, I agree with Amy. I think it's amazing that the water department and those people, fire department, all those people working in this cold weather really appreciate it. Want them to know that, you know, that we understand you're freezing there.
Probably have to warm up a little bit before you start freezing.
Um, I did have something, Marsha and I kind of got caught by, um, someone asking about the music downtown. The city's the one who turns it off and on.
We are, we're still, um, relying heavily on Kirby Fox to monitor that for us. And I just have not touched base with him yet this spring to get that turned back on.
Okay, yeah, it's been a couple of months since it has been, um, which, they've spent so much money putting it together. I'd like to see it utilized a bit more.
Yeah, we just need to follow up with them.
Yeah, sounds good, but.
I would echo what everybody else has said and thanks to everybody who's been out in the cold. As I was sitting in my nice cozy house and worrying about whether or not I would lose power. Uh, and I thought I could always cover up more. And then I thought about you guys standing in a hole of water. So, um.
It's the warmest place.
That's true, unfortunately.
No, it's my turn.
Exactly.
So anyway, thanks to you guys.
Couldn't say it any better. Moving on to the information, agenda, review, ordinance. Is there anything here? It, it looks, I'm encouraged, I'm very encouraged.
Things are moving in the right direction. So, yeah, we don't need to discuss that tonight. Things change for. More, but we'll, we'll bring that back for discussion.
I, I want to say though, that, um, I was, I happened to be at Walmart the other day. And which is, I don't go to Walmart very frequently, but when I do, I kind of look around to see who's wearing masks. I saw one person who didn't have a mask and that's it. So I think that people are pretty much resigned that this is what needs to happen. And I think that we can see what, you know, there are lots of factors that are bringing, bringing our numbers down, but that is one of them, I believe. So thanks to everybody.
When I click on the link, it shows that we're in the rainbow. Correct. So that.
That's good. That's very good. So we want to see that in place for a while longer. Um, we'd also talked with, uh, Brady Bray and Dave Garnas, and they were recommending sitting tight until we got through phase two vaccination. So, yeah.
Well, but phase two keeps getting pushed back, correct?
It, it does. So we'll be having probably some conversations with them and probably a discussion on this thing over here.
Agree with, uh, Christie about the mask and what Amber said about the college students. We have international students in our apartment. And if they come through the door for any reason, they all have a mask on. So they understand. It's very important.
My, my hope is that we will continue to see efforts increased about delivering a vaccine. And that we'll continue to work our way through. And, uh, so ideally speaking, we'll see that effort ramp up. We'll stay maintaining, uh, decreased numbers in longer time in the green. And that will hopefully give us enough footing to be able to start moving towards. Do that, I think that there will still be those that see benefit in continuing it. Not just this, that it slows down or other things that slow down. But we can, we can guess those as we continue moving forward. This time I would entertain our motion. This time I would entertain a motion to adjourn to a study session.
So.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson and seconded by Commissioner Hash to adjourn to a study session to discuss city commission policies or priorities?
Priorities.
Priorities. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Your turn.
Want to take a small break before we start the study session? Are you guys good? Go ahead.
Okay.
All right. In your pocket is a brief memo that describes what the community priorities were when we did the community prioritization discussion in 2018. And I have these written down and I'm hoping Ash can help jog my memory too on this. I believe these are the community priority ones, but this might be the community priorities that the commission set at that time. So it's set, so our commission order. So modern medical facility construction is set to begin in March on that with groundbreaking March 1st at 4:00. You all are invited, by the way, I believe you just bring your own shovel. I'll have the formal invitation emailed to you here at the end of this week. Focusing on jobs and a skilled workforce and that's always ongoing. We want to make sure that we've got great jobs available and we've got the skilled workforce to fill those jobs, whether we bring those people in or we grow our own. We want to make sure that's being done. And then addressing educational facilities as needed. The USD 333 community vision team had engaged in 2019 and got a long ways down in their discussion for what should happen with the school facilities. And then they paused in 2020 due to COVID. I know Quentin's doing some work with the legislature again on that to try to make it so it's more affordable. Whereas I don't know the status of that, that work at this point in time. Then we also took some time to drill down into more city centric priorities in 2019. So we knew kind of where to focus our operations. And for 2019, and those were reviewed again in 2020, and those priorities were to increase the tax base, to maintain our infrastructure. And I'll share with you that my definition of infrastructure is really broad and it would cover everything from the projects that we're doing to replace the pipes in the ground to the pavement, to also keeping our employees strong and sound with their professional development and making sure that we've got the right people in the right spot. Another priority was to facilitate an environment of collaboration and peacefulness. And I think we referred to neither that is going really well for everyone in our community. And addressing light, we're working on those from multiple ways, getting the nuisances a little bit harder. We obtained a demolition grant. We've filed corporate announcement they had received that Federal Home Loan Bank Housing Rehab Grant. So attacking those from different angles. And then to address housing, again, we've talked some about getting a housing study done to help feed information for comprehensive plan update and to help guide us so that we have some data so we can go after some additional funding and just kind of know where to focus our efforts on housing. Know that we need low income housing, that we need retirement housing, single family, do we need multiple family? What is it that we're really needing to flush out? So with those in mind, just open it up for sure. What would you like to see us focus on in 2021?
I had one, just kind of to play off the increased tax base, maybe drilling down and being a bit more specific in that fostering an environment for growth from within. To really kind of send a message to our folks who are already here that you're our number one priority and we're going to chase you to increase what you're doing. That's going to be number one. And then everything else that happens because of that is focus.
It sounds good to me. I mean, when I think about it, it's amazing to me that we've seen a growth in businesses during a pandemic. I mean, so I'd say let's keep going.
How can we help foster that as a system?
I think it's, you know, keeping a mindful eye on what increased regulation can do and cannot do, you know, both of those things. We just need to be mindful of everything that we do. Just look at it in that lens. Is this going to do, how's this going to affect the business community? How's it going to help our businesses grow? And then also, you know, if someone comes to us with a project, to look at it through that lens as well.
Do you think that would be a stylistic approach or would we want to address policies to support that? Is it simply looking through that lens? Or is it, would we engage? Or set it in place where there's structures that actually support that?
I guess at first stylistically and then maybe.
See what obstacles we run into.
Maybe consult with our economic development leader and see what her thoughts are on it or that board in its entirety and seeing where they.
What obstacles people run into is trying to do this?
Absolutely.
I don't know. There's some way we can make the downtown businesses or any business enhance their buildings.
Oh, bringing back the downtown.
Downtown revitalization grant or whatever.
As a general material. I agree with you.
You know, we had some that started something and never finished it. Some never got started that need to. I don't know. I encourage them more to enhance the outside of their building, not just their merchandise.
I, as before you said, that one of the things that I've really, probably have said before, but I really want to find a way to engage is I think that we have several distinct driveways, what I call driveways in Concordia, certainly 81, Sixth Street, 11th Street. There, there. Some are the emergency snow routes, but it's really the roads that carry the most traffic and not just Concordia and traffic, but visitors from outside. And I wanted, I would like to be creative in figuring out a way where we can really, whether that's designating them specifically for whatever it is, but to help encourage and foster investment in that external aesthetic where this is what the most people who are going to be traveling in Concordia are going to see. How can we put our best foot forward as a community in these very prime areas? I don't, I don't like regulation, but, but is there a way we can do? Are there, are there things that we can offer as a city that would help promote that? Whether that's making it a priority for sidewalk or making it a priority for some of our demolition or this neighborhood grant? What can we do to foster that investment in these prime areas? And I think downtown is certainly one of them. But I think 11th Street, as people are going to the high school or the football game, they're going to see this particular residence or if they're going east to the elementary school, there's, what can we do to really make those particular areas shine as people are traveling in it? It's a question and I really don't know what the answer is.
Yeah. And like the river, I know we've dealt with the rivers for years. We can't get them to do anything, but the river crossing where you go to the orphan train using, you know, that area. It's bad enough going through the recycling center. That intersection is terrible.
Girls used to like driving over the choo choo bumps.
That's what they are.
If you ever walked, you know, down Washington to work a trade, it's, it's not, I mean, you're in the street.
Well, and you're looking down, so you don't fall on something.
To me, I think that that would fall under, whether we want to say it's under the addressing light umbrella, but it's.
One of the things I think might be helpful is identifying projects that can be done. I know there's a kind, there used to be before COVID, a couple of groups that would always be asking, and I send them a run to sometimes, but you know, we want to volunteer. We have the group coming in for the church. We need to probably keep a really nice list of what those things are. So four H clubs and groups like that. There's something immediately that fits within our priority list that we can push them to instead of, you know, go hang the rails at the ball fields, which is a good thing. But I think that was always what I, we tried to push it to do. But there are other things, just keep it a list. Prozakon.
Well, in the Methodist church.
Yes, yes. For blight.
We painted those railings.
So did I hear you say you want to keep addressing blight as one of the priorities?
Actually, most of these things I would keep because, you know, so many of the things got stopped during COVID.
I think that's wonderful.
They all, they all still fit into the overall community priorities that we're working towards. We're really not, we're not able to create jobs specifically or a skilled workforce, but we can support jobs through getting out of the way to let entrepreneurs do their thing. Addressing housing and blight. How can we get targeted in that effort as opposed to just casting this? But we would be more successful by being more targeted, not excluding things that would fall outside of that target, but really making that a priority.
I'd like to see a little bit of, I want to say maintenance and the ball field, the complex, if we could. And he's done a great, Chris has done a great job on getting the college to come out and do some stuff, especially to the umpire building. That looks nice. Getting the volleyball, sand volleyball out there, that's nice. Keep working on grades per se. And a couple of sports families, a couple of people would have liked to have a fall tournament here, but then they go to Solana because it's a little bit nicer complex. Of course, Solana is a bigger, I mean, and I don't know. Like what, what needs to be done out there? I think it's a lot that needs to be, a lot.
Been a lot of work in the last few years. I think Chris has got some items on priority. Do you want to share some of the stuff that you have kind of on your radar? Or do you want to wait till I have one through at once time?
I mean, there's, some of the bigger products are already down, but we're still working on some more shade aspects of it. A lot more concrete to get rid of the mud, especially the spectator traffic ways, both on both sides of it and security lighting, especially in the parking lot. So those areas are a little bit higher on my list.
How much do you have to have shaded to compete for state tournaments? Do you remember how many seats they have shaded? It's like some, but I don't, it doesn't have to all be shaded, but there's a portion I remember.
I remember reading our talks of wanting to support the athletic fields was really looking at it from an economic development perspective, that this is something that draws people to town. And the more, the more events that we can have and funnel through that, they're going to be shopping here, dining here, staying here. And that's, that's all economic development. So I mean, it's, it's an investment. I see not only in harm, median quality of life, but also the benefit for community as whole.
So we've got adjusting the terminology of increasing tax base to fostering an environment for growth from within. That sounds really good. And then addressing blight and housing, keeping on there. What else do we want on there or is it focused on those three?
And there's always infrastructure, you know? There are all works on that, so.
Yeah, roads, yeah. Roads is like, roads and water, right? Replace as many lines as we need, as we can and every street.
And I personally would like to see something down in this parking lot across the street in that wall that needs to be taken down or repaired.
Bogart's wall?
The Bogart. The tiles falling off of it has been for years.
It is, it is on our list, it's part of the sidewalk repair program, so. Also a great job of making sure that others have been taken care of. They'll probably be a part of that program. Anything else that you want to consider or those sound like good areas for this year?
Would it be helpful for you if we were more targeted in directing you in those areas or is having that broad application give us the direction you need?
Having the broad application, I guess, worked pretty well for us for the last couple of years, but I would like to start to see more of a targeted effort. It kind of feels like we've got a really broad swath right now. And for this year, we're in the middle of implementing things that we started under those. We've got a lot of execution to finish and finish well. So getting more targeted, I think for this year would be helpful just to help us with managing our time and our brain cell resources would be great. What does that look like from your perspective?
What do you mean? Being more targeted?
Yes.
So I guess if we're looking at, what I would see that as is like being able to, we probably have somewhat of a backlog of folks who would say, I would have been able, I feel like I would have been more able to do this had this been this way or that been that way as far as entrepreneurship for that avenue. So I think we have some ideas as to what we could refine internally to smooth that process out, to maybe be more targeted with that. You know, I think maintaining infrastructure would seem like we do, we staff does really well with the capital improvement projects, kind of prioritizing wants and needs and allocating resources to make the most of those dollars. I think facilitating, continuing that environmental collaboration, I think that's, that's going on. Keep that up. I would, I don't know how we do this, but I think it would be good for us to prioritize areas of blight that are, that are. In one hand, I think that there's, there's an issue of blight that would be independent of location, that the more blighted a property is, the more in need of attention it is regardless of its location. But there's also, I think, a grading scale of this, this property is blighted, but it's, maybe it's, where no one ever drives by, the traffic counts are like three cars a day. And so if I'm trying to determine between which of these properties is going to qualify for the demolition program, that the one that has a traffic count of 1,200 would receive preference over the traffic count of three. So being more targeted in, in how we address that. As far as addressing blight too, I also would like to implement something. I, I know that there was a, we get into kind of a, there was a property that received compensation for demolition, but the city also participated in funding that demolition. And I want to weed that out. Because I think that that's the way that people can, so if my house burned down, as part of our insurance coverage would pay for demolition, but I'm still eligible to qualify for the demolition program to split the cost of that. And the city then would pay their portion and I would pay my portion. But I would still be receiving entire compensation from my insurance program for that demolition.
So then the only folks who are going to qualify are ones who didn't have proper insurance?
Not necessarily because it's not just fire damaged.
If a person, I would, I would say if a person has. If a person, I would, I would say if a person has adequate, that a person would need to demonstrate their insurance coverage as part of the program. Because not all insurance policies do cover that. And so the house could still be adequately insured without having demolition as a, as a component of that.
Could we just add a check or place a check on the application? And would that be an easy way to address that?
We could talk to them with the various insurance policies. And I would definitely agree with that is to make sure that if somebody receives insurance proceeds or not receiving demo, they might know that we've talked about that. I can't remember if we already addressed that by policy or if we got it close and just didn't get it finished. So we'll, we'll go back to people.
I think it's a. Use, probably do more projects, a lot more projects.
Right. And I think that's all part of maximizing our, maximizing our value in the money that we're allocating towards addressing blight. And so that, that we're really getting the, the most dollars, whether that's from a traffic count perspective or a, this is straight up dollar value. Really maximizing our ability to, to address blight in our community. Not that any resident is more or less important than another, but there are greater values to something that has much higher visibility. Something that's done, it's up in between two, this one will get preference. So targeting that, dialing it into the best of our ability. And so maybe we accept applications over this period and then we take out of that, then we allocate, maximizing that. And so we're looking at sidewalk repair, that maybe a sidewalk on 11th Street is going to get ahead of the list and maybe one on 19th Street. Because more, more people are likely to walk on the sidewalk towards the school than they might elsewhere. So we're going to make that a priority as we, we address.
That makes sense. So when addressing blight in your definition, that also include maybe a more aggressive approach to nuisance abavements?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm amazed at how much.
I mean, I've heard from citizens who live next to people who are hoarding in their backyard. You shouldn't have to live next to that and it should be able to be taken. I mean, I know it's a lot to get it to that point, but man, that's, you don't sign up for that when you buy a house.
It's all trade. Yeah, I think, I think nuisance abavements are.
Well, and people that use a little house for storage or hoarding, whatever. And then don't repair the house itself, just let it deteriorate. That's, you don't sign up for that either.
The more a person is, is able or willing to engage, whatever supports necessary to maintain their own stuff, the less likely this city is going to have to be to come in and do that for them. And that's, I struggle with the overreaches. Government, so please just do this on their own and we don't have to do it. But if someone is obviously demonstrating their inability or their willingness, then we could, maybe it's not even through a nuisance. What's, what's going on that's making it, so maybe that's part of supporting citizens as opposed to getting in the way. Not necessarily slapping with a nuisance abatement, but maybe trying to identify what might be going on that's hindering you from clearing up some of this treasure in your backyard. What's maybe hindering you from maintaining this property to these general standards? And if there's an issue, we can work to find, not that, not that that's necessarily our job. We can try to connect people with resources that are going to get the job done. Well, here's our demolition program or here's this community organization that is able to help with some of this. And so we can coordinate these efforts that ultimately are going to benefit the whole community. Connect people with tools that maybe they may be lacking otherwise. And then if there's just an unwillingness to access the tools, then that becomes more of a, okay, well, you, you've got this resource, you're not engaging it. Here's the nuisance, you need to do it. It's on my presence.
Yeah. Maybe no vehicle or hallways.
That's helpful. I think you're closer to the, closer to the vision now.
Yeah.
Thank you. And we've been focused on the natural gas electricity stuff, so I knew what we could get the capital for more stuff paid. So I will probably email you guys stuff, so you can see that ahead of the bunch of study sessions. So you kind of know what was on there, what we're looking at, kind of things that have come up since then. Will that be helpful?
Been a little busy.